Good morning. The microphone's a lot louder than I remember it being. Pursuant to the proclamation by the governor, the time for convening of a special session of the General Assembly has arrived, and I hereby call the Senate to order. At this time, I'd like to ask that all unauthorized persons exit the chamber. Mr. Secretary, will you please read a proclamation from the governor convening a special session of the General Assembly?
A proclamation convening the General Assembly of Georgia in special session, whereas Georgia Constitution, Article 5, Section 2, Paragraph 7, grants the governor the power to convene a special session of the General Assembly, stating and thereby limiting its purpose, and whereas the regular session of the 2021 General Assembly adjourned Sunday at 1:00 on the morning of April 1, 2021, and whereas the governor has determined that certain purposes warrant the convocation of a special session. Therefore, by virtue of the power and authority conferred upon me by the Constitution of Georgia, I, Brian P. Kemp, Governor of the State of Georgia, do hereby convene the General Assembly of this state in special session on Wednesday, November 3, 2021, for the purposes and only those purposes specified as follows: One, for enacting, revising, repealing, or amending general law for the division of the state into appropriate districts from which members of the Georgia State Senate shall be elected; the division of the state into appropriate districts from which members of the Georgia State House of Representatives shall be elected; and the division of the state into appropriate districts from which members of the House of Representatives to the United States Congress shall be elected. Two, to consider amending Code Section 48-1-2 for taxable years beginning on or after January 1, 2021, based on the amendments to the United States Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended, that passed on or after January 1, 2021, and on or before March 11, 2021. Three, for enacting, revising, repealing, or amending local laws which the General Assembly deems necessary to avoid unreasonable hardship or to avoid unique undue impairment of public functions if consideration and enactment thereof are postponed. Four, to ratify the provisions of the executive orders dated May 10, 2021, May 14, 2021, May 21, 2021, and May 28, 2021, and numbered 05.10.21.2, 5.14.21.1, 5.21.21.1, and 5.28.21.3, respectively. In the official records of the Office of the Governor, suspending the collection of motor fuel and diesel fuel taxes pursuant to Code Section 45-12-22, for the purpose of ensuring the supply of petroleum products to the State of Georgia during the state of emergency for petroleum shortage declared by executive order 05-10.21.2. Five, for the Senate to consider and confirm various appointments made by the governor since the adjournment of the regular session of the General Assembly on April 1, 2021, given under my hand and the great seal of the State of Georgia at the City of Atlanta on the 23rd day of September, 2021. Signed, Brian P. Kemp, Governor. That completes the order. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. It is now time for our morning roll call. It is now time for our morning roll call. Are there any motions to excuse? Chair recognizes the Senator from the 28th.
Good morning, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to excuse the Senator for the 27th for business outside the Capitol.
Without objection, the Senator from the 27th is excused. Are there any additional motions to excuse? Chair recognizes the Senator from the 36th.
I ask for permission for unanimous consent to excuse the Senator from the 35th, who is in the building but not on the floor yet.
Without objection, the Senator from the 35th is excused. Without objection, the Senators from the 38th and the 43rd are also excused. Are there any additional motions to excuse? The Secretary will call the role of Senators. Signify your presence by voting the aces, which the Secretary will unlock the machine. For what purpose, the Senator from the 39th rise?
I would like to, I ask for unanimous consent to excuse the Senators from the 40th, the 38th, 55th, and 42nd, who are all in the building.
Unfortunately, the bell has already rung, and the machine's open, and we're unable to make that exception. Thank you. It's now time for our morning devotional. It is now time for our morning devotional. I'd ask that all Senators, please take your seats and cease all audible conversations. Doorkeepers, please secure the chamber at this time. I'd like to recognize our pro tem at this time to lead us in our pledge of allegiance and to introduce us to our chaplain of the day.
Thank you, Mr. President. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the Georgia flag. I pledge allegiance to the Georgia flag and principles for which it stands, wisdom, justice, and moderation. Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen of the Senate, how'd the Braves do last night? Hey! Oh! 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 This is the chaplain of the day. I was just reminded that I'm introducing the chaplain of the day. Beg your pardon. Our exuberance overwhelms us. Ladies and gentlemen, I have a, a true foundational member of our community to do our chaplain of the day today, Mr. Casey Riles. Casey is a businessperson in our community. He's a devout Christian. He is a husband, a father, and he is a man of wisdom, a man of encouragement, and a man of inspiration. And it gives me great pleasure to have him here today, and I look forward to each of you having a chance to meet Casey and his beautiful wife, Ally.
Casey?
Good morning. That was a good chop at the beginning there. I wanted to try really, really quickly to encourage us with one big observation and then two quick conclusions from that observation. And before I keep moving, I'll tell you, when I first got the call to come and do this, I said, "I'm not a pastor." And then I got the formal invitation, and it said, "Keep it under five minutes," and I knew why I was invited. I don't know any pastor from any faith who can keep it under five minutes, but I'm gonna do it for you today, because I know you've got some business to take care of. But this one big observation is this: We're here to do God's work. Not just your work, not my work, but God's work. I told you, I'm not a pastor, but I always kind of wanted to be. I'm like, "I'm the only person you know who's like, 'Lord, I can do it! Sign me up! I'm a preacher.'" And he's like, "No, you're an insurance man." I'm like, "I want to talk about the streets of gold." And he's like, "No, you can start an asphalt company, but that's where we're gonna stop." But because I've always wanted to do that, I have thought about these things a lot and look into these matters delicately. And so I love the way Martin Luther puts it. He says, "No work is secular." And the way he draws that conclusion from the Psalms, when he sees that it says, "God feeds His creation." And Luther said, "Well, how does God feed His creation?" He does it through a farmer, through a milkmaid, through the people who bring the products to the market and the people who sell it. And then Luther actually draws another conclusion from the Psalms that I think would be encouraging to you. Luther said, he saw in the Psalms, it says, "God makes strong the bars of the city gates, and He blesses the children within them." And Luther said, "How does He do it?" Good government policy. That's how He does it. How does God Himself advocate and speak up for others who can't talk for themselves? Through you, through people just like you in this room. So, we didn't come just to do the state's work or our work, but we came to do God's work. And that should do two things for us, the two conclusions. One, it should affirm us to the heavens, and it should humble us to the dirt. If we really came to do God's work, it should do those two things at the same time. It should affirm us to the heavens, because God chose you to do His work. He gave you a voice, and you a vote. Is that affirming? It is to me. But it should also humble us to the dirt, because no arms can reach all the way around God's plan, and no eyes can see from every angle. So I need the person to the left and to the right of me. I need even people who don't see the world the same way as I do. And if I'm gonna do God's work, I have to be able to see a little bit more broadly than my own two eyes. All right? Jeff told me if I would beat this and yell really loud, maybe the guards would run in. He said, "Y'all have had something like that before," so I thought about, maybe I should yell louder. But if we are gonna do God's work today, we have to be affirmed to the heavens and humbled to the dirt. And I'll leave one last Psalm with you. My wife Ally's with me, and this is her favorite Psalm. And this is what it says: "The Lord is my portion and my cup. The boundary lines have fallen in pleasant places for me." And to the degree that I know that the Lord is my portion and my cup, I can turn around and be a portion and be a cup. I can provide for others. And to the degree that I know the Lord has drawn the boundary lines in pleasant places for me, I can live a life of gratitude, and I can turn around with love and justice and do that for other people. And I know you've got big work to do. I know you've got God's work to do. So let me pray for you. Lord, we love you, and we thank you for this time. Lord, we thank you that you've called us into your work. What an amazing thing that you've called us to join you in your work. And Lord, we thank you that you have affirmed us to the heavens, and you've at the same time humbled us to the dirt. Lord, help us to see that clearly as we go about today, your work. Lord, we thank you that even though you require a righteous standard, you've come low, and you've given us love, and you've given us mercy. So help us to join you in your work today. Amen. Thank you, guys.
I forgot to mention that he's the son of a Baptist preacher.
Well, it's certainly great to see everybody here today. I know that we've got a lot of hard work in front of us in a very compressed timeline, but I wanted to take this opportunity to thank so many folks amongst the Senate staff, the Lieutenant Governor's staff, and all of your teams for us getting here today. Obviously, there's continued protocol that we're continuing to make sure is in place through these difficult times. I also want to take some time to thank Georgia Tech for continuing to facilitate the surveillance testing. I think it's continued. I think we all saw the value of it last session, and certainly through this period of time. So first and foremost, just want to thank everybody for getting us here today. And last but not least, I want to thank the Atlanta Braves for winning the World Series Long time coming. At this time, I'd like to recognize the Senator from the 48th to introduce to us our Doctor of the Day. We're reacquainting ourselves with the Doctor of the Day process. It's been a long time since we've had this opportunity.
Thank you so much. Yes, we are reacquainting ourselves. Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm here to introduce our Doctor of the Day from Senate District 48, Dr. Kalpana Prasad. Dr. Prasad attended medical school at King George Medical College in Lucknow, India. After medical school, she moved to England, where she completed her British psychiatry residency with all Birmingham Hospital system. And after she moved to the U.S., she completed her U.S.-based psychiatry residency with Drexel University in Philadelphia. While she was in Philadelphia, Dr. Prasad held various roles, beginning as a medical director at a women's mental health unit, inpatient and outpatient director, clinical director, and then the city-appointed psychiatry consultant. I think this is a very impressive CV that she has, and I really appreciate the attention to mental health as an important issue. After living and working in Philadelphia, she came here to Atlanta, where she worked at the Atlanta VA Medical Center, and became faculty with Thank you so much. Yes, we are reacquainting ourselves. Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm here to introduce our Doctor of the Day from Senate District 48, Dr. Kalpana Prasad. Dr. Prasad attended medical school at King George Medical College in Lucknow, India. After medical school, she moved to England where she completed her British psychiatry residency with all Birmingham Hospital System. And after she moved to the U.S., she completed her U.S.-based psychiatry residency with Drexel University in Philadelphia. While she was in Philadelphia, Dr. Prasad held various roles, beginning as a medical director at a women's mental health unit, inpatient and outpatient director, clinical director, and then the city-appointed psychiatry consultant. I think this is a very impressive CV that she has, and I really appreciate the attention to mental health as an important issue. After living and working in Philadelphia, she came here to Atlanta where she worked at the Atlanta VA Medical Center and became faculty with Emory University School of Medicine where she supervised the outpatient resident clinic. Dr. Prasad also became active with the Ronald McDonald House Suicide Awareness Programs and has worked alongside agencies that provide support to abused women. She's the immediate past president of Indo-American Psychiatric Association of Georgia and serves as a member of the Board of Trustees with the Georgia Psychiatric Physicians Association. Dr. Prasad was also recently nominated to the class of the Georgia Physicians Leadership Academy, of which I am also an alumnus. And in September of 2020, Dr. Prasad began her new role at the newly-appointed program director of the planned psychiatry residency at Northeast Georgia Medical Centers. So congratulations to Dr. Prasad on that. In her personal life, Dr. Prasad lives with her family in Johns Creek, Georgia, the incredibly vibrant and diverse community of Johns Creek, and she enjoys boating and gardening and going for hikes with her husband Rajiv and her dog Romeo, good dog name. She has two kids. Her son is a medical student at the Miller School of Medicine in Miami, and her daughter is a freshman in high school. You must be incredibly proud of them. Thank you so much, Dr. Prasad, for being here.
I'm Kalpana Prasad. I promise I won't take much time. I just wanted to thank you all for taking the effort to improve and make Georgia healthcare, hopefully, the shining star for America. I am representing 20 northeastern counties, including Hall County from Northeast Georgia Medical Center, and I'm very proud to say that we will be training 24 new doctors in the psychiatry residency program. And with COVID, as you know, addiction and mental health and women's care has been a prime thing, and that's what I'm here for. So thank you all for doing the fantastic work you do, and go Braves.
All right, let's take up our next order of business, which will be the adoption of the rules of the Senate for this special session. Specifically, the secretary will read a communication from my office regarding returning the Senate to regular order.
To all senators and Senate staff from Jeff Duncan, November 2nd, 2021, regarding return to regular order. On the first day of the 2021 regular session, the General Assembly convened in the midst of a declared public health emergency due to COVID-19. Due to the nature of the state of emergency, the Senate unanimously adopted a motion to suspend a number of Senate rules that affected the normal operations of the Senate and, in some instances, restricted access to the Senate. As we begin the 2021 special session, the state of emergency has been lifted and vaccines are readily available to those who want them. In light of the change in circumstances in pursuant to the order the Senate unanimously adopted on January 11, 2021, I'm happy to report that the Senate is now able to return to regular order. This means that all rules of the Senate are reinstated. As a result, you will see the following changes during the 2021 special session. First, the 60-second clock will be used to record your vote, Senate Rule 5-1.5. Two, senators must seek recognition from their desk, Senate Rule 8-1.1. Three, the press gallery will be reopened to the press, Senate Rule 9-1.9. Four, the public gallery will be reopened to the public, Senate Rule 9-1.16 and 9-1.9. Five, members will be required to attend committee meetings, Senate Rule 2-3.3 A and B. And six, personnel and guests are permitted on the floor, Senate Rule 9-1.10. I look forward to working with each of you to make this a productive special session. That completes the order, Mr. President.
Thank you. Will the secretary now read Senate Resolution 1 EX?
Senate Resolution 1 EX by Senator Miller, the 49th, and others, a resolution adopting the rules of the Georgia Senate for the 2021 special session of the General Assembly and for other purposes.
Chair recognizes the Majority Leader for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for unanimous consent that Senate Resolution 1 Echo X-Ray be engrossed.
The Majority Leader has moved that Senate Resolution 1 Echo X-Ray be engrossed. Is there objection? Is there objection? There is objection. There is objection. She objected first. Would the Majority Leader like to speak to his motion? He waves. Would the Minority Leader like to speak to her objection? She waves. Does any other senator wish to speak? Chair recognizes the senator from the 26th. Great to see you. Chair recognizes the senator from the 26th. Would you like to come to the well or speak from your desk? The chair recognizes you to speak from the well.
First of all, he didn't explain what y'all were doing. The other thing, my understanding is that you would not be able to amend the map, that you would have to introduce a substitute. Is that correct?
This is a motion to engross the rules.
Well, my problem is if you engrossed them and you've drawn the map, then you can't amend the map. This is a different topic. Well, can you come up here and explain what you're doing there?
The chair invites the senator from the 26th to spend some time with the Majority Leader on the side. Is there any other senator who wish to speak for or against the motion? The question's on the motion of the Majority Leader to engross Senate Resolution 1 Echo X-Ray. All those in favor of the motion will vote yea. Opposed, nay. The secretary will unlock the machine. On the motion, the yeas are 33, the nays are 20, and the motion has prevailed, and Senate Resolution 1 EX is engrossed. Mr. Secretary, will you please read Senate Resolution 1 EX?
Senate Resolution 1 EX by Senator Miller, the 49th, and others, a resolution adopting the rules of this Georgia Senate for the 2021 special session of the General Assembly of Georgia and for other purposes. That completes the order, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes the Majority Leader to speak to the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I appreciate my good friend with some questions about this resolution we got. All we're doing in this resolution, since it's a special session, we don't have a fixed number of days. We set the Senate rules to mirror what the last five days are in a regular session with how bills flow. That's what this does.
You have no questions.
I yield the whip.
Does any other senator wish to speak for or against the resolution? The chair sees none. Is there objection to the previous question being ordered? The chair hears none, and the previous question is ordered. For what purpose does the senator from the 42nd rise?
I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to excuse the senator from the 33rd from this vote, from business outside the Capitol.
Without objection, the senator from the 33rd is excused. The question is on the adoption of Senate Resolution 1 EX. All those in favor of the resolution will vote yea. Opposed, nay. The secretary will unlock the machine. For what purpose does the senator from the 26th rise?
Madre inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Is this the particular act that we talking about that will not allow you to amend the bill on the floor?
This is a cumulative vote on the rules for this special session. There's lots of nuances and elements of those rules.
Mr. Governor, it is true that passengers would not allow members to amend the redistricting plan, which means that if you amended it and got it passed, that they would have to go back to the table and get the figures right during the district.
Senator Lucas, or senator from the 26th, that's for each and every member to decide for themselves as to what the process and how they work the committee process. So I would encourage you to continue to read the rules and vote accordingly.
So in other words, you pass a rule with no impunity, which means that I got to substitute an entire bill?
I don't have a vote in the matter.
Mr. Governor, you are the leader of the Senate. You will decide which way or the other.
I announce the votes. I don't have two buttons up here to vote yes or no. Do you have any further questions?
It wouldn't do me any good.
Thank you, sir. On the adoption of the resolution, the yeas are 34, the nays are 19, and Senate Resolution 1 EX is adopted. Secretary will read a resolution.
Senate Resolution 2 EX by Senator Miller, the 49th, and others, a resolution to notify the House of Representatives that the Senate has convened and for other purposes. That completes the order.
Does the Majority Leader wish to speak to the motion, to the resolution? He waves. Does any other senator wish to speak to the resolution? The chair hears none. The question is on the adoption of Senate Resolution 2 EX. Is there objection to adoption of the resolution? The chair hears none, and the resolution is adopted. Secretary will read another resolution.
Senate Resolution 3 EX by Senator Miller, the 49th, and others, a resolution to notify the governor that the General Assembly has convened and for other purposes. That completes the order.
Does the Majority Leader wish to speak to the resolution? Does any other senator wish to speak to the Senate Resolution 3 EX? The chair recognizes. For what purpose does the Minority Leader rise?
We don't have a copy on our desk of this particular resolution.
I've been informed by the secretary that this resolution, and they can get you a copy, is just a letter to inform the governor that we are starting our special session. We can certainly get you a copy of the letter. Is any other senator wish to speak for or against the resolution? The chair sees none. The question's on the adoption of Senate Resolution 3 EX. Is there objection to adoption of the resolution? The chair hears none, and the resolution is adopted. At this time, I'd like to appoint the following senators as a committee of notification. The President Pro Tem, Senator from the 15th, the Dean of the Senate, the Majority Leader, the Minority Leader, senators from the 8th, 45th, and 50th. I would ask that all the members of the Committee of Notification meet the Secretary of the Senate in the back of the chamber immediately upon adjournment today. He's decided to meet at the front instead of the back. All right, at this time, all senators who have bills or resolutions to introduce, please bring them forward to the secretary's desk at this time. Mr. Secretary, first reading of Senate bills and resolutions, please.
Senate Bill 1 EX by Senator Kennedy, the 18th, and others, a bill to be entitled an act to provide for the composition and number of state senatorial districts, to provide for a short title, to provide for when members of the Senate elected shall take office, to provide for the continuation of present senatorial districts until a certain time, to provide that the provisions of this act shall supersede and replace a districting plan and certain changes thereto, to provide for related matters, to provide an effective date, repeal specific acts, repeal conflicting laws, and for other purposes. That completes the order.
Reapportionment and redistricting.
Senate Bill 2 EX by Senator Kennedy, the 18th, and others, a bill to be entitled an act to provide for the composition and number of congressional districts, to provide for a short title, to provide when such representatives shall take office, to provide for continuation of present congressional districts until a certain time, to provide for related matters, to provide an effective date, repeal the specific act, repeal conflicting laws, and for other purposes.
Repportionment and redistricting.
That completes the order, Mr. President.
Are there any unanimous consents? The chair hears none. Does any senator wish to rise on a point of personal privilege? The chair recognizes our distinguished and honorable Rules Chairman for a point of personal privilege. Something must have happened to you since you walked in the room.
Mr. President, members of the Senate, my friends, I want to thank every one of you for all the kindness you've given me after you heard about my injury. I ruptured my Achilles tendon completely back in May. I was playing basketball with Charles Barkley and, oh, come on. You don't believe that? Now, to be honest with you, I was vacuuming my truck in Somerville, Georgia. I stepped on the vacuum hose, extended my Achilles tendon, and ruptured it in two. So I was in a wheelchair for three months, a walker, and now I'm with a boot, and now I'm in a cane and regular shoes. But I want to thank you. It's been an eye-opening experience to be unable to do anything for a few months. You get to reevaluate yourself, and if I was grading myself, it may not be a pleasant grade. So I hope that I can be of service to each and every one of you throughout our next session, regular session, and please call on me if I can. But thank you for your prayers and your encouragement and your inspiration. Mr. President, I yield the whip.
Great to see us, Mr. Rules Chairman. You forgot to use your cane on the way back. Chair recognizes the senator from the 35th from her desk for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Senators, I want to just take a moment to thank each and every one of you for your prayers, for your many calls and acts of kindness, the flowers, because most of you know that January 20th, I got a call after taking the COVID test six times here in this building, and I was negative, but then that day, they said, "Don't come back." I said, "I don't have COVID." The next day, I couldn't get out of the bed. The ambulance had to come and get me. I couldn't even get to the door, and I spent four months in the hospital and two months in a nursing home, but I'm back! By the grace of God and the kindness and all of the encouragement from all of you, I am almost 199%. Almost, because I have one knee. I had double knee replacement during this time, and I have one knee that doesn't know it's my knee yet. It still think it's a piece of metal. So hopefully, Mr. Chairman and senators, I won't be in your way too much, but I will be hopefully walking and running, and I want to say, get the power back in this knee. I will challenge any of you to run up and down the steps like Rocky did. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, everyone, from the bottom of my heart. I appreciate it.
Great to see you back in the chamber. Chair recognizes the senator from the 56th for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. August of last year, my older son was rushed to the hospital, and the doctors told me something you never want to hear. Your child's organs are all shutting down, and we don't know whether he's going to make it through the night. It was the toughest moment of my life, and we found out the next morning that my 24-year-old at the time had to immediately put on dialysis. It was heartbreaking, but at least he was alive. And then through the grace of God and through the wonderful doctories at Emory Hospital University Transplant Center, I heard the greatest words of my life in June. You are a perfect match to donate a kidney to your son. And just a few weeks later, on July 21 of this year, I was able to do that and give my left kidney to my son Will, who now, we just celebrated his 26th birthday. He is doing perfectly fine, and I just want to thank each and every one of you, the calls, the cards, the text messages, the feedback from people in this building throughout the state and candidly all over the world was both humbling and overwhelming. And I just want to say this. Earlier that year, this year, I saw some of the worst of humanity in March, and then I saw some of the best in it. So we're going to go through days where we'll see ups and downs, and you never know what the person next to you is going through. So I would just like to say, let's all just remember while we're here, it's a service to each other, and most importantly, it's a service to God, who gave a miracle to me and my family. Thank you so much.
Chair recognizes the senator from the 34th for a point of personal privilege. Who are you cheering for in the World Series?
I'd rather keep it on. Thank you very much. Can you all hear me with my mask on? LG, members of the Senate, I rise to share I am six generations Georgia, and I am so proud to have been a Grady baby where we could just walk from here over to where I was born. And I rise just to say we're World Series champions. I mean, my grandkids can see where they were born. We are World Series champions, and I was there in '95. Thank you. I yield the whip.
Spring training's only a few months away. Are there any motions to withdraw and commit? For what purpose does the senator from the 53rd rise?
Parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Isn't true I forgot to tell you something?
That probably happens often, but go ahead, sir.
Well, since the senator from the 34th just mentioned, I will have a resolution I'd like for everybody to sign commending the World Series champion Braves. It's not quite ready yet, but I'll get it to everybody. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks for the reminder. Is there any motions to withdraw and commit? The chair sees none. The chair recognizes the Majority Leader for a motion.
Mr. President, I move that the Senate stand adjourned until 10 a.m. on Thursday, 4, November 2021.
Mr. Secretary, do you have any announcements?
The Senate Repportionment and Redistricting Committee will meet at 1 o'clock in Room 450. Senate Public Safety Committee will meet in Mezz 1 at 1 o'clock. The Senate Age and Mandatory Education Study Committee will meet at 3 o'clock in 307 CLOB. That completes the order, Mr. President.
The Majority Leader has moved that the Senate stand adjourned until 10 a.m. on Thursday, November 4, 2021. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed, no? The ayes have it, and the Senate is adjourned. Thank you.